Since the 1st, 2021, Thompson Planning District Board Meeting. So. Just we're waiting for television?
Yeah, it's on there.
Councilor Ellsworth, Councilor Valentino, can you hear us?
Yep.
Dave Haseman.
Dave Haseman.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you. So for the Thompson Planning and District meeting, I am a chairperson and all my council is board members, just for public information. Call the meeting to order, approval of the agenda. Councilor McMurdo, Councilor Lumber, all in favor? Carrie. First is the adoption of the minutes, Thompson Planning District meeting, January 18, 2021. Moved by Councilor Lumber, seconded by Councilor McMurdo, be it resolved that the minutes of the Thompson Planning District, held in Council Chamber, City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Monday, January 18, 2021, be adopted and circulated. Any questions? Call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilor Valentino?
Yeah.
Okay, Carrie. Next, we'll go to resolutions. A resolution to approve general permit number 73784 received from Real Estate Services Branch General. Resolution 2021-2004, moved by Councilor Prue, seconded by Councilor Lumber. Whereas the Thompson Planning District Board has been advised of a Real Estate Services Division, Manitoba Department of Central Services, general permit number 73784 for one, 50 by 30 mess hall, one 50 by 30 activity hall, one 30 by 30 cell. Hello? Off to gone. Four 20 by 24 sleeping cabins, six by six outhouses. Oops, eight, six by six outhouses, which is to be located on PPSA 12-77-03, WPM and PT. WPM and approximately 1.52 acres. Somebody is not on mute, please. And whereas the Development Review Committee has reviewed the application and have no concerns, therefore be it resolved that the Thompson Planning District Board advised the Real Estate Services Division, Manitoba Department of Central Services, that approval of the application shall be subject to, one, provision of a detailed site plan showing the proposed development and, two, the applicant be in good standing and obtain the required permits from the planning district. Go to administration?
Yes, so this was received through the Thompson Planning District. It's been at the Development Review Committee and it's from the Real Estate Services Branch. It's basically to develop what's being called as a cultural area down along the Jonas Road. I believe the applicant is a lossless agency and there's, the province is looking for comment back by the February 5 deadline. Development Review had no issues with this and has recommended it forward. And in discussions with the province, we've added several conditions for consideration.
Thank you. Dave, do you have, David, do you have any comments?
Yeah. The location is just 10 kilometers down what's locally known as the North Jonas Road. That access road is actually under a general permit under Canadian Craft Paper along with manageable infrastructure for the winter road. The clearing that they chose is an old project staging area that's no longer utilized, so it's a really good location and the province supports this kind of initiative for reuniting families.
Thank you. Comments from board members? Call for them.
I'll allow Councilor Deputy Mayor Wong to go first, please.
Basically, I have no comment. I just want to advance to the chair that I'm going to be abstaining this vote because of the direct impact for me and.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also will be abstaining from the vote today, given that it's, there are some considerations with me and work here. And if you'll allow me, Madam Mayor, I'd like to direct the question to Mr. Haseman. Dave, if you can hear me, can you let me know what's, what role Valley plays as a stakeholder in this process?
From my understanding, that we will be circulating to the Mines and Minerals Branch. Comments will be, Valley can submit their comments through there. I do believe it is on top of one of Valley's mineral exploration areas, though there's no activity been in that area for a while. And it's also away from your new Valley's proposals for the new parcels that are going to be added to their, to their lease there.
Just to clarify my concern here, Madam Mayor, anyone who's looking at the map can see that this is very close to Dam B. So I'll direct the province to have a closer look there. And I'll leave it at that because I'm not certain what I can and can't say, however, in public concerning my employer. However, I'm sure that Mr. Haseman can put one on one together and see what Valley's secondary concern might, or primary concern might be there. And it's got nothing to do with mineral rights.
Thank you. Any other councilor or board members? Sorry.
Councilor Ellsworth has his hand raised.
Board member Ellsworth? Hello, you're on mute?
You're on mute. Never sounded better.
First of all, thank you, Councilor Fountain, for acknowledging that. This, this land falls on with LGD, correct?
This is in the LGD, yes, you're correct. It's in the LGD of Mystery Lake. This is Crown Land.
So regards of attacks, it doesn't, it doesn't affect Thompson. We wouldn't get any tax, number one. And number two, really, my understanding, the province is just looking for any comments or issues that we might have as a city, but regardless of what we have, really, we haven't got much say in it, I don't think. And so maybe Dave can clarify that.
Yeah, I thought we were all board members of the LGD Thompson Planning District, which this is where the decisions come through. So if there's any concerns to be raised from the city of Thompson, they can be directed through the Thompson Planning Board, which we're on right now.
My other Thompson Planning District oversees this part of the development plan as well as the zoning bylaw for the LGD Mystery Lake.
And just a point that we're not city councillors on this board. Thank you. Board member Lumber. Chair.
Yeah, it's another nice development. I know back years ago, there was different organizations that had little outcamps like this that helped with the children and the families to do things in the summer if they don't have the benefit of having their own garbage and things to go to. And this is beautiful to spend some time in the outdoors and use an old development or an old site where they used to use as staging grounds for tree planting or forestry work. This would be a nice little location for people to spend some nice quality time with family. And we know we need a pile of recreation things to do for us and our families now and in the future, especially with this cold. Thank you.
Thank you. Board member McMurdo.
Thanks, Chairman Smook. Um, I, so are we here to offer our support to move ahead because it sounds like there's a safety consideration and not that anybody watches the news knows what can happen if you're in the proximity of a dam, if there's any kind of problem with it. So can, is, can we wait until we hear back from the Mines Department or, and their conversation through Valley before we offer our support and ensure that those safety concerns are mitigated?
The Thompson Planning District can make this decision. I believe I'll ask the board member Haseman to jump in here as well. Really, it's going to be made centrally, Real Estate Services Division. This, we're looking at what's the zoning implication, what's the planning implication? And any other things that we want to highlight, which is why we talked about permits and whatnot. If it's something larger like that, I'm assuming, Dave, that would go through environment, but I'm not sure how the province makes the overall decision. We're just one part where we'd be writing a recommendation forward, but there's a whole bunch of other departments that would be looking at these issues.
Yeah, you're correct there, Anthony. This will be circulated to all other departments and branches, not just within ARD. It also goes to, like you say, the environment. The Mines Branch is now part of Aggris Resource and Development now, so they will be providing comments and contacting Valley as they are a stakeholder in the area, so they will be contacted.
So I think the point that we'd make is that if the Thompson Planning District's fine with the development within the purview of what we oversee, we'd say we're fine with this, with these conditions, but we could make a note that Environment Branch should look at X, Y, or Z, or Mines Branch should look at, and let them, through their expertise, bring that back.
Okay, if I could follow up, then I'd support the initiative for sure, like in the development and with that kind of caveat and that note in there, then I'll support it.
Thank you. And Valentino. Board member Valentino?
Thank you, Chairman Smook. Yeah, I'm going to be supporting this just as a member of the Planning District in the process that's been followed to get it to this point. I'm fine with it and I support the recommendation that came out of the Development Review Committee with no concerns coming from there, as we are just one part of the whole process for this development. I'm fine with supporting it as is. Thank you.
Any other? Board member? As chairman of the board, I'm also, it basically needs to go through this step to move on to the next step. If there is any other concerns to be dealt with, so I'll be, I support it also. Any other? With that, I guess we call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Board member Ellsworth?
He was on mute. He said yes.
You're on mute?
Yeah, just trying to please Council Fountain. I said aye.
And then we had to abstain because they have interest in it, because Board Member Wong and Board Member Fromm. Adds up, so we just, it'll move on to the next steps. Thank you. And I'll call for adjournment. Board Member Wong, Board Member Colburn, all in favor?
Aye.
Carrie.
Good day.
Night, everyone.
I can honestly say it's a long board meeting that's been six years. Women of the town, you're all called. Oh, please change your, your nameplates. Mayor of Council from Chair and Board Member. Thank you. So as mayor of the city of Thompson, we'll call this regular meeting of city council for February the 1st, 2021 to order at 7:15 PM. At this time, I'd like to recognize that we're on treaty five land and that we are all treaty people. Thank you. Next, we'll have approval of the agenda. Councilor Lumber. Councilor McMurdo, all in favor? Carrie.
Aye.
Thank you. Carrie, next course, we're going to community comments and feedback. And based on our last meeting, we had a question from Mr. Matichuk, Ron Matichuk. And it was regarding the balance in our reserves. So the balance at the end of 2019, which was the last audited year, as per the audit, was $15,94289. At the end of 2020, we were budgeted to have $11,547,000. We will have the actual amount once the 2020 audit is completed. And if the, and the rest of the questions, our money went for the compactor at the lap, at the landfill, concrete pond, and residential garbage trucks and the pool design. Thank you. So with that, we will go. Is there any more community comments or feedback? Third and final time, any more community comments or feedback? Seeing none, we will move on. Thank you. Number adoption of the minutes for January 18, 2021. Resolution 2021-013, moved by Councilor Lumber, seconded by Councilor McMurdo. Be it resolved that the minutes of the regular reading of council have in Council Chambers, City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Monday, of January 2021 be adopted and circulated. Any comments, concerns? Call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Carrie. Next, we're going to go to committee, an external committee report, Development Review Committee. And Councilor Prue, are you going to, are you prepared to give this report?
Yep. So Development Review, this is for the Development Review Committee, reporting period is September 4th, 2020 to February 1st, 2021. So the committee members are myself, Councilor Prue, Chair, Council Fountain, co-chair and Mayor's group. Citizen and organizational representative, Wayne Porty, citizen representative, Don McDonald, School District of Mystery Lake. Boris Chud, sorry, Chud Showel, Mystery Lake School Division, alternate. Dennis Green, Chamber of Commerce, and Kim Hicks, Thompson Housing Authority. For staff, we have Anthony McGinnis, City Manager, Dan Haywood, Building Inspector, Surrender, sorry, Bagua, manager of infrastructure, Keisha Davis, Economic Development Officer, and Tommy, I'm sorry, Tommy Provek, Executive Assistant to the City Manager. Staff changes, so Director of Development Services, Hark Rajiv Gill, departed the city of Thompson to pursue new career opportunity in Alberta. The Development Review Committee wishes Mr. Gill best of luck in his new business ventures. The Director of Development Services position is still currently vacant. Zoning bylaw, zoning bylaw 1891-2012, as amended, was updated to include a new definitions for cannabis retail store and dispensary. And to bring greater clarity to the appropriate zones for cannabis sales in the city. Asset Management Bylaw, a draft asset management bylaw for the city of Thompson was reviewed and discussed and referred back to the administrative team for more work prior to bringing back to council for first reading. Our vacant and derelict building bylaw, a new vacant and derelict building bylaw, 1996-2020 was developed and recommended by DRC and was passed through three readings of council. The administrative team will be bringing forward suggestion, suggested fees and fines associated with the new bylaw to an upcoming DRC meeting for consideration, recommendation to council. Land sales, multiple options to purchase and develop, and development agreements are at various stages in the legal process for several new developments in the city. They're ongoing, or sorry, these are ongoing and the DRC committee is updated as progress is made. For far paramedic program. Negotiations continue between partners regarding project support. At the current time, the project will not be able to, to happen prior to September 2021 funding deadline as partner commitments have not been secured. And therefore, partial funding identified will be lost by the project. All parties have agreed to continue negotiating, negotiating towards launching a program in the future based in Thompson. Electric vehicle charging station project. Grant applications were submitted to NR, NR Can for electric vehicle charging station, third-party distribu, distribution. Which would provide 50, 50% grant towards the cost of 20 electric vehicle in, or EV in the, around, in and around the city. The charging stations, right? The project will be a partnership between the city and the Thompson Community Development Corporation. A response is expected by spring 2021. Request, requests were made to the Province Climate and Conservation Fund by the Thompson CDC to support the costs associated with installation of these 20 EV station, stations locally. The project submission is still being reviewed. Economic Development Officer Keisha Davis continues to represent the city on the Winter Weather Testing Committee. Community Development Corporation, multiple meetings of the interim CDC board have been held and the board, and the board bylaw has been revised and is at a legal council for review. The Economic Development Officer Keisha Davis has secured multiple grants to support the reveal of the CDC, including funding from the Manitoba Mineral Development Fund, Travel Manitoba, and the Churchill Regional Development Fund. CDC project, or project activities are scheduled to begin in March 2021. The plans are being made to create an arms-length CDC board composed of community members. Building permit update, year to comparison for the month of December. One permit was issued for the month of December 2020 for a total construction value of $8,000. Two permits were issued the month of December 2019 for a total construction value of $327,395. One permit was issued for the north, or for the month of December 2018 for a total construction value of $0. Year-to-date comparison from 2018 to 2020. Total year-to-date for 2020 is 120 permits for a total construction value of $11,486 and 20, or $226. Total year-to-date for 2019 is 80 permits for a total construction value of $11,914. And total year-to-date for 2018 is 87 permits with a total construction value of $18,295,824.30.
Thank you. Any comments on the report? Nothing on TV? Okay, seeing none, we will take it as information. Thank you very much, Councilor Prue. We'll now move to resolutions. 7.1 is a resolution to ratify the board members to the Thompson Public Library Board. Resolution 2021-014, moved by Councilor Colburn, seconded by Councilor Lumber. Be it resolved that council ratify the board members to the Thompson Public Library Board for 2021 as follows. Brady McMurdo, Sue O'Brien, Kathy Nesio, Alicia Bedford, Geraldine Dixon, Carolyn Winchup, Carol Pronto. Okay, administration?
This is a yearly housekeeping resolution that's required under the Public Libraries Act to confirm, confirm the board members for our local library board.
Thank you. I'd like to congratulate Councilor McMurdo on your position with the library board. I sat on it for a couple of years and I enjoyed it very much. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Smook.
Any other comments? Councilor McMurdo, did you?
I'll just say that I did sit in on my first board meeting Thursday last week and it was a pretty, pretty good success, I'd say. Some things that we talked about in council, like maybe returning Saturday service, they had brought up and discussed on their own accord. Yeah, it was a pretty productive meeting and I'm looking forward to, to the future.
Thank you very much. Call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. 7.2 is a resolution authorizing administration to enter into a contribution agreement with controlled entities. Resolution 2021-015, moved by Deputy Mayor Wong, seconded by Councilor McMurdo. Be it resolved that council authorize administration to enter into contribution agreements with the following controlled entities for 2021. Thompson Public Library, Thompson Recycling Center, and Thompson Zoological Society. Administration?
Okay, this is just an annual process to enter into the contribution agreements with our controlled entities. The change of dates occurred in the TRC library and for the Thompson Zoological Society, we've updated the contribution agreement to include some additional reform requirements due to the delay in the audit for 2018 and 2019. The first quarter payments will be made once the agreements are approved by council here tonight and they'll be sent to the entities tomorrow with their, how we set the contribution agreement to the entity.
Thank you. Any other councilor comment? Call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
7.3 is a resolution to approve the contract extension for the auditor. Resolution 2021-016, moved by Deputy Mayor Wong, seconded by Councilor Prue. Be it resolved that council extend the audit contact with Kendall and Tanya for the fiscal year ending 2020. Administration?
And yeah, so just to call in the timing of the 2018 audit completion, and the recommendations to extend the current auditor for one additional year. Then the audit would then be turned out again after the 2020 audit is completed.
Thank you. Council, I mean, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a question to administration. Under the municipal, how many time are we allowed to extend contract for auditing? Is any law in place or is it just based on what we agree on?
I think underneath that requirement is that council appoints an auditor each year. I don't know if there's a process, I don't know if that's indicated in the current process for that auditor.
So there's, we don't know that.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay, call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Looking, checking your comment. 7.5, whoops, pardon me, 7.4 is a resolution to approve the interim water and wastewater rates for 2021. Resolution 2021-017. Resolution two zero two one zero one seven. Whereas the city of Thompson currently has a rate application into the public utilities board for twenty twenty one. And whereas the public, public utilities board will not have a decision regarding our rate application before the twenty twenty. One billing is completed. And whereas the city of Thompson's current rates will not cover the increased operating costs, the city of Thompson. Will incur as of January one twenty twenty one. Therefore, it resolved that the city of Thompson requests the following interim rates. On expedite basis from the public utilities board for the twenty twenty one rate application effective January first twenty twenty one as follows. Quarterly service charge, twenty two dollars and twenty cents. Water for cubic meters, three dollars and eighty one cents. Waste water, dollars for cubic meter, a dollar seventy nine. Minimum quarterly water and wastewater, a hundred dollars and sixty cents. Hot water, a cubic meter price, four dollars and twelve cents. Reconnection fee, three hundred and twenty dollars. Hydro rental, a hundred and twenty five dollars. What do administration? Your timing?
We need a mover and a secondary.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, actually, I need a secondary on here. I've got moved by. Counselor Landmark, I don't have a secondary. May I have a secondary? That's not all speak on. So just after, just I'm not going to reread the whole resolution, but. Resolution two zero two one zero one seven was moved by Counselor Landmark and seconded by Counselor Pro. Jenny, open to you.
Okay, so the city submitted a rate study to the PV for twenty twenty one with all of the twenty with first three of the bylaws. I would do not anticipate a hearing back uh in time for the twenty twenty one of the law. As the city will be crossing a term rates due to the following concerns. Have the wastewater treatment plant reached the standard completion on May fifteenth twenty twenty? At which time, the city gaining current costs expected to cost approximately about five hundred and fifty thousand more. In twenty twenty one, due to the full year operation with a major cost of hydro, the alum, polymer, and plastic soda. As well as we're experiencing declining consumption and not as a high rate as we previously had, but approximately seventy thousand cubic meters. Less than we had in the twenty twenty application.
Thank you. For the council? Pardon? A mover, a bribe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I know we'll, we'll need to make some changes and I'm glad that administration brought this forward so that we have money and we don't incur a deficit. I appreciate that they on the head and then. Prepared this for us considering that public utilities board can't get back to us sometimes.
Thank you. Or council family?
I'll be waiting. I'm not, not yet.
Have I got somebody on TV? Councilor Elsor?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Have we done any examples? For example, if someone was paying two hundred dollars in the same timeframe. Say from, you know, the first quarter of twenty twenty. What would be an estimate of the increase? Cause we, you know, we got the rates there, but if you were paying two hundred dollars in the first quarter, what would that mean? If we did some figuring like that, so people really gets a clear sense of what the increase is rather than just a number. On the paper talking about and then they are the right numbers. I mean, what we're looking to to do. But I always find if we got an example, it sure originates more with the people, eh?
Jenny's looking that up at the moment? Is there any other questions?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I was hoping to have to hear a little bit more of the discussion before I made comments tonight, but perhaps it's not necessary. Of all the issues that come before council, this one. Gets a significant amount, probably the most amount of complaints from people to to meet personally. More so than COVID and other things. The amount of. And I may be misunderstanding the system, but. There seems to be quite a bit of unfairness and some difficulty with this system and the way. Distribution works and how much people are paying to date. The last three days, I've heard three complaints with respect to this. So I won't be supporting this today just based on the fact that we've tried to get this right for years, but haven't yet. And I I'm of the opinion that we really need to sit down and do that. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe. In favor of the water rate increase due to the fact there's a few items that I really don't understand. Actually, I do now, but I I do not agree with that. One is the hybrid rental. The infrastructure been built fifty years ago, so we pay by the taxpayer to have that in place. And now because of the system, we need to have some sort of way to charge the wait user. So we add that into it. And that's a very significant amount to charge. And I look at it, it's not very lot of repair going on with the hydrogen. And hundred and twenty five dollars per month, uh, per year. I think that is is a money for nothing. Second one is a reconnection fee. A lot of municipality down south, they don't even charge that. And here we are charging three hundred and twenty dollars. Plus, the water rate is going up and up and up. And the revenue is about eight million dollars a year. That's a significant amount that we bring it in with the water. Charging. I I I just use a quick example comparison. Our revenue from taxation is about ten. The worries of already already eight. It's is a huge burden to the taxpayer, a weight player. So I believe in my whole entire career of the politic, I never voted in favor. And this would not be an exception, and I ask for a call to vote, please, Madam Mayor.
Well, Councilor Val and Pino next?
Thank you, Mayor Smo. To a few of these comments, this was discussed at the finance committee meeting with good discussion at that time and it was. The decision of the finance committee to move this forward to a resolution for council tonight because of the fact. That we aren't going to have a decision by the public utilities board before our first quarter billing in twenty twenty one. So in order to be fiscally responsible and not run a deficit. We have to have some kind of rates and effect for January first. With the public utilities board telling us they're not going to have a decision on what we've submitted. So I'm definitely supporting this. Because we have to have rates effective January first moving forward for the year. As we don't have the public utilities board study back. So this is also a lobbying. Point that mayor and council needs to continue to do with the province. That the public utilities board system in their backlog isn't helping municipalities. When they're trying to ensure they aren't running a deficit with their water utility. I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Colburn?
So on my understanding is we're getting this way, the water rate. Because this water sewage treatment plant is costing us half a million dollars more a year. Am I correct?
Well, that's, that's only part of it, I believe.
Well, that's what I heard a while ago is because it's five hundred thousand. And more even costs of running the water the plant. Now, we were made to build that plant by the province because we weren't up to stand. Now, did the province increase their funding? For this? Probably not. So here we go again, putting everything onto our taxpayers. Not only are taxes going up, our water is going up by a big amount. And it's just not fair. The government has been all in our funds since two thousand and sixteen, the same. Don't give us an extra thing, but then they force us to do these things. And ours tax base is shrinking. And it's even going to get worse with this COVID thing because now we're going to lose some businesses. And here we are putting water rate top on our citizens. Who's going to pay a lot more in taxes, is going to pay a lot more in water. Me, I will not be supporting this. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, who did I have next? Councilor McMyrtle?
Thank you, Madam Smo. And I think this is a really, really hot button issue within Thompson. And I, you can see why if about forty cents a cubic meter for fresh water is about twelve percent of the increase and the sewers. For twenty eight cents is about eighteen percent. So. It's really difficult to ask our taxpayers to pay that much more just in one year on an increase. You know what I'm saying? Like every managing, but especially with an eight million dollar revenue with water already, it's just. It's it's not sustainable for one and like, like I, I just have a hard time supporting that myself.
Just so you know, in the long run, it's the public utilities board that sets the rates that we're going to pay and that we can't run a deficit. These rates are based on what it costs us to run these utilities is how it it's worked out. So if we run a deficit, the city's going to have to pay it. It's going to come over the taxpayers' pocket one way or another in the end, I am sure. This is basically based on a user pay system is is how the, you know, public utilities works. I'll go to Councilor Landmark and then we can possibly go back to administration to.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just going to try and explain what you just did and say that. You know, we we have a dollar figure at the end of the year for running our utilities. And we're trying to make it as fair as possible, easy public utilities work to come up with a number that matches that. We're not trying to run a deficit. We're not trying to charge more than and and. And and build a bigger sewer plant than what is necessary. We were told to make sure that we. Built the sewer wastewater treatment facility that met certain codes. We did that. Now we have to pay for that to be run properly and sustainably. We're not trying to to add anything to that. And right now, this is just to cover us until public utilities board get back to us and says, this is what you can charge. And so that we're not running a deficit. But that's all I want to say. And we're, we're not trying to charge more. And if if we don't charge this at the end of the year, we're, we're, we're going to wind up having to charge more on your tax. Simple. I I don't know how else we get around it, so.
Councilor Fountain?
Madam Mayor, I've been lucky enough to serve this community now two years on this council and what I've seen is. Every year we have a surplus that goes into our reserves. So. The concept that this necessarily has to come off the taxpayers' back in addition to what we've already funded it doesn't fly with me. I also, I'm very concerned that there should be a price built in for use. And what I've heard here, and I I love administration to have the opportunity to clarify. Cause I may have spoke to earlier, I may support this, but everything in my gut thinks this is something I shouldn't support. And the main reason for that is that if I heard correctly, we have less consumption. However, we're going to be charging more. To me, that indicates that our costs are fixed and it doesn't matter how much you're pumping, how much you're treating. That cost is the same. That's what that seems like to me and that that can't be and I I can't support that if that's the case.
Deputy Mayor? Oh, okay, sorry, I've got Councilor Ellsworth with her before. He's on his first question. Councilor Ellsworth?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Smo. This is not a new subject for council. Anyone that have sat on the finance committee. Heard reports out to council itself, we've talked about the increased costs, it's new wastewater treatment. We had nothing to measure that by when it comes to the chemicals that's been used and everything else. So we had no measuring stick that we can compare it to. So thus, you know, a year later, a few months later, we start to see the rise in costs. No one really can help that. That's what it takes to to treat that plant. My concern is that if we don't do something, we definitely will have a deficit. I'm sure a lot of the administration have crunched the numbers. That's why they're coming here with a resolution. To get something in place prior to the utilities board doing something for us. But there's two pieces I like to bring up. First of all. Some of the counters I've mentioned, I I think there's a big problem with the way we measure period. In the OMs are probably the businesses and that causes more concern. So we have to have a system in place. That correctly charges people for consumption. And and I'm not going to get into it tonight, but I can give you example after example after example. Where people has been not charged correctly. And it has caused a lot of heartaches for some low income people and other people as well. So that's another issue. I will support it for for because we have to. But someone else also raised, I think the mayor raised it as well. It's certainly going to have to be found somewhere. So if we don't pass the resolution. It'll be within the budget somewhere to cover it off because we can't have a deficit. But I would say and urge administration. Knowing the concerns as Council Fountain has pointed out about the number of people who approached them and and I'm sure all of us councils gets to. Not only lately, but we get bombarded, including you, the mayor, with those rates and some of the malfunction, what we believe in the meter system or whatnot. So. Even though I will support it, I would urge administration, if we haven't already started working on it. Let's get something in place to look at that old system and making sure it's done right. So thank you for the time.
Thank you. Okay, Deputy Mayor Wong?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to clarify the comment, comment from a candidate, uh, Counselor Valentino about the good discussion at the Liga. I'm the chair of the Liga and the finance. That day, when I chaired the meeting because of a CFO, which is Jenny Crand, brought this topic. She said, because of the POV delay, we need to set up the bill. So we need to have this conversation or this resolution to be approved by Monday to charge to set up the bill. We don't have any debate at all. We didn't argue about this and that. As a chair, my job is to get a consensus. If everybody say, yeah, we need to bring it to the table, I have to do that. We don't have a long discussion for that topic. So I want to make sure this is not misleading the rest of my colleagues. And about my job, that I do my job. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Val and Pino?
Thank you, Mayor Smo. Oh, yeah, there actually, there was some discussion at the finance committee and wasn't doubting your job. I'm just saying, it was discussed at the finance committee. Further to Counselor Ellsworth's points, I I agree with him. Like, it's important to note, this is just the interim rates, like the public utilities board sets our rates. This is just the interim rates that we have to set because they haven't got back to us. And perhaps the the water and wastewater needs to be a discussion point at committee level. With some of the comments tonight, but my stand is still the same. I'll definitely be supporting this.
Thank you. Jenny, did you have any more comments after? Thank you. Any other council?
Counselor Ellsworth has his hand raised, but I'm not sure if that's for before.
Councilor Ellsworth, have you got a new question?
No, I'm sorry. I forget sometimes to lower my hand. That happens as you get older, as you should know.
I know that. Thank you, sir. Councilor Fountain?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to comment with regards to committees and this particular issue, while frankly to any issue that's of importance. When we send something to committee for discussion, it immediately puts a number of us at a disadvantage because only a number of people have a vote on those committees. I believe the time to discuss things with everybody on the even footing is council. I just want to clarify that and make that point here that I think it's important here today. Knowing that we have quite a bit of opposition when perhaps some of the counselors didn't think that'd be the case. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Final comment? Councilor McMyrtle?
Yeah, I I just like to say that I I realize if we don't get the revenue through this rate, we're going to have to get it somewhere else. There's just. I I'm new to council and I haven't participated in all the discussions about where we can find the savings and what's really driving those budget increases, but it it just seems like a. A bit of a staggering figure and hopefully next year, when we're sitting here, we're not talking twelve and eighteen percent. And with that said, I will, will support it this year. Thank you.
Okay, and we're going to call for the vote in a recorded vote as requested by Deputy Mayor. All those in favor? I've got Counselor Landmark, Mayor Smo, Counselor Pro, Counselor. Counselor Valentino. Counselor Ellsworth, yes?
Yes.
Opposed? I've got Counselor Colburn, Deputy Mayor Wong, and Counselor Fountain. Carrie? Carrie. Thank you. Seven point five is a resolution to authorize administration to begin filling and remitting the, the health and post-secondary education tax. Resolution two zero two one zero one eight, moved by Counselor McMurdo, seconded by Counselor Pro. Whereas the city of Thompson files and remits the health and post-secondary education tax to the province of Manitoba. And whereas the province of Manitoba requires the health and post-secondary education tax to be filed and remitted online through taxes beginning February twenty twenty-one, now therefore be it resolved that council, pardon me, council authorized administration to begin filing and remitting health and post-secondary education tax through the existing, existing tax ass online account. For the administration?
I'm sure the city's required to pay health and education tax of two point one five percent on the total payroll. As of January first, twenty twenty-one, there's requirement to file a P E V online with the first payment being February fifteenth of twenty twenty-one. This is really a housekeeping resolution and the payment will hold a law that will be coming forward with the check register, so it will be paid online again.
Thank you. Move the Counselor McMurdo. Do you have any comments? Comments from other fellow councillors? Okay, okay. Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven point six is a resolution to approve the contract between the city of Thompson and Tapestry Industries as a community entity coordinator. Resolution two zero two one zero one nine, moved by Counselor Pro, seconded by Counselor McMurdo. Be it resolved that council approved entering into a contract with Tapestry Industries as the community entity coordinator for the city of Thompson to fulfill the requirements of the federal reaching home program. For the administration?
Sure, this is a part of the federal reaching home dollars towards homelessness. When this was signed, I'd mentioned to council that this was a bit of a hardship on the administration. It was not something we were staffed to do, but there was no one else in the community capable of doing it. The council wanted to make sure those dollars stayed in the community. Since then, we've had a rotation of a number of people through that position internally, trying to staff it and not being able to do it at the, at the level of detail that the federal government wants and a high turnover in that staff. So what we're proposing now is to enter into an agreement with a local provider that could provide these services on behalf of the federal government. Basically to become a full movement. We're getting the dollars from the federal government. The, we're giving it to a contractor and they're fulfilling their obligations that need to be met by the feds. And the city would have the oversight and we would take care of the audit of those federal funds as well. So this is for a contract over, I believe, three years until the end of the program. And where there's a sample contract attached, but we still have to make some tweaks to that contract. So the request tonight is to give the administration the permission to enter into an agreement with this individual so that they can provide those services for the government of Canada on our behalf.
Thank you, Counselor Pro. Do you have any questions? Deputy Mayor Wong?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Now, couple of question. Number one, since, well, we don't have the position almost a year and a half. So those fee that, what are we doing with the money?
All those dollars still remain the property of the government of Canada that is being held by us or by them. Those dollars will still come to the city of Thompson towards homelessness programs.
Second question is about the fee that we are going to pay out to this contractor. Is it enough to cover by the flow through with the commission?
The city doesn't take a commission on these.
We do have the commission from doing the flow through, but we don't keep it. We use it to pay, am I right?
That's correct.
So my question is, is that money not to cover this?
The individual has agreed to the fees that are put, put forth by the federal government.
So my third question is the final question, Madam Mayor. Is this person qualified?
This individual had done this job in the past when reaching home under, it used to be called Homelessness Partnering Strategy, HPS, back in twenty eleven. This individual did that job, I believe, for the Thompson Neighborhood Renewal Corporation, who was the entity at the time for this federal program. So this person has done this job before in the past. And this was advertised through newspaper, I believe, and online. They went through an interview process. The federal government has reviewed this person's resume. He's comfortable with them.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Counselor Valentino.
Counselor Valentino?
Thank you, Mayor Smook. I am definitely supporting this. I am happy to see this. This is a tremendous amount of paperwork to keep this program and project going within our city. And it is valuable to have this project within our city. So I'm happy to see that we're able to have somebody that we can contract this out to instead of it falling onto our admin team because it takes up a ton of time. So I'm definitely supporting this and I'm glad to see it.
Any other comments? Counselor Colburn?
So this is funded by the government. Normally coming in of our, by our taxpayers probably for this.
This portion that we're discussing tonight, the funding for this position comes from the federal government. Reaching home overall is funded the majority by the government of Canada, though the city of Thompson and a few others provide in kind. So council provides in-kind services such as uses of warm-up shots, but we're not providing those dollars directly.
One other question here. I, I've been thinking, I read that, I think I read it somewhere, there is a thirty day clause on this one. Is there?
Four.
We don't want, we got thirty days or?
Those are some of the things that we still have to tweak through legal. So there's a few legal clauses that we still have to. This is the contract that was provided by the entity that we're looking to hire. But like I said, we still have to put some of the city's clauses in. So what we're asking tonight is you, council, to give us the permission to finish this contract off.
So we give the permission to make, is that, do it come back to us as a sealed contract, signed contract, or do it go forward?
It comes to us as administration. We take care of that behind the scenes. Which is typical. Often, council gives us the permission, we go do the work.
Counselor Fountain?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just wondering if there was, I, I have no issue with the, the company nor the individual associated with it. That said, was there not an opportunity perhaps for someone working within our city teams to be able to fill this role? And was that considered when they looked to fill it with this contractor?
We've done it at least twice now, using people from internally. One individual, both times the position was left and the next person had to start it over from scratch. So the pro, the program's getting behind. We're not meeting all of our deliverables to the federal government. So it's best that we get someone who's committed to it over multiple years to finish the project off.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just, even from the small bit I have to do, signing the paperwork at the end of each term. It's, there's rounds of paper that I see, so I can't even imagine all the work that goes into it. Counselor Ellsworth?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say that this is not the first time we've discussed this issue in committee and at council. In fact, Anthony had brought it forward on a number of occasions and stressed the staff. I believe internally, we have really tried to make this work. It's not working. So I certainly support if we got someone qualified, as I hear that we do, they've done it before, I'll certainly support it. And I'm glad that we are doing this because we would not want to lose that funding to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Seven point seven, resolution to approve the contract between the city of Thompson and Catherine Sims-Cobell was as the taxi training facilitator. Resolution two zero two one zero two zero, moved by Counselor McMurdo, seconded by Counselor Pro. It resolved that council, that council to approve the contract between the city of Thompson and Catherine Sims-Cobell as the taxi training facilitator is outlined in the contract. For the administration?
There's a, there is a requirement in the taxi file that the city offer a taxi course to those people that are applying for a taxi license. The taxi course facilitator position has been vacant now for just over a year and it's been being built by the licensing sector until it could be built again externally. Yep. So due to the requirement, where administration is recommending that we enter into a contract with Catherine.
Thank you. Anthony?
And just note also that we're, this one as well, we're going to include some of the legal language after the legal review and discuss that with the entity so, to finalize the contract.
Thank you. Counselor, Counselor Fountain?
Just for clarification, thank you, Madam Mayor. Can the administration see if this is coming back to council once the language is reset and tweaked by our own legal department?
The intention was to move it forward tonight, basically giving us the permission to finish it. If council wants us to bring it back, we'd have to incur that extra step.
So for clarification, you're asking us to pass something that we haven't seen the file legal wording on?
We're asking to give us the permission on that to pass the, basically let us enter into the, into an agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A few questions. Number one, you see this one-time fee of three thousand to develop a, or create a taxi course for the city? I thought we were at that in place.
Anthony?
So, um, no, in the past, the city hired an individual, I believe, from Winnipeg. He owned that material and we paid him to run the course. Individual no longer provides the course. So now that we're hiring our own independent person, we have to have them develop a course, which then will become the property of the city of Thompson. So that wasn't our property previously. It was, it was a course that was being provided to us. Now we'll own our own course.
So we pull up the same question. So this three thousand will come up on the taxi, you're wanting to do that?
I'm not sure. I believe it pays itself off through the fees that are charged for people taking the course. So upfront, we're going to have to put the money upfront to get the course developed, but then we recoup the costs through offering the course.
Okay, so Madam Mayor, right? So throughout this time, when the person that no longer services, kill today, how are we provide that course? What kind of material we be using? Are those, are those quality material that, what I'm saying, like all the taxi driver license from the day when the person terminated the contract till today, how many new license been issued? Are those all good material or where are we using the material? How are we using the material to train those newcomers?
Sonia, there's been, I believe, two courses that were, that took place since the, the other facilitator did it. The licensing sector created a course of her own with some of the information that the other person had with his permission. Just to kind of amp it up a little bit, she was trying to fill a gap where, so we can still continue to offer that course to the taxi industry so they can still get licensed it. It was pretty much most of, I believe, what the other gentleman, the other facilitator had, but not exactly because his was a little bit outdated. So she kind of added up a little bit. So she's going to take what she's created, the licensing sector, and work with Cat to create an even better course going forward.
So maybe a comment for that? Thank you, Madam Mayor. So basically from that day when the contractor no longer services you today, the cost that we've been provided is kind of like a half butt job then. Because now you have to amplify, make it better for me, this newcomer to do this. So from the time being, the last time being, so the cost we've been providing and trained those taxi drivers is not a very good material or enough to confident that we have everyone to use that method or material. That's why we need to come into the new contract, a new person with a better material. That's how I take it. That's my, my personal opinion.
Okay, and that's your personal opinion and how I sort of read it is that I see is that we're developing a new course and like anything else, it evolves and is up to date with the different standards. You know, you get a course in a book and they upgrade the book. So this is just to me, it's possibly an upgrade and this, that the city will own. The city had to develop something that it was going to own itself so that, and this course itself possibly will evolve as the taxi industry moves on. It's not necessarily going to just stay and be one, the same course forever. I have Counselor Valentino on the. Okay.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Smook. Yeah, so I'm supporting this. We have a gap in the system. Good clarification, Sonia, thank you. So this position that's been vacant now for over a year, we have somebody that we would like to get into a contract with. The whole expenses are cost neutral to the city, so I'm supporting that we move this forward to enter into this contract with her. So we need to streamline this process and have a proper taxi course facilitator. So I'm definitely supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ellsworth?
Yeah, I just have a question. Is all of the taxi drivers required to take a course each year or just new ones?
Just new, newer applicants. New applicants.
So, so just to follow up, basically the course that the, the people currently in the taxis, the course they took, it was fine. It's just that we're not dealing with that person anymore. And I'm sure there's a standard where with the new course being developed, it has to follow that standard. So I don't see a whole lot changing. It's just that, as the administration pointed out, the new course material, because it's paid by the city of Thompson at a cost, I believe I read at three thousand dollars, it then becomes the property of the, the city. So I certainly will support it.
Counselor Pro?
Do you have an estimate on how many new taxi drivers you could get in a year that need to do this course on average?
I could get that for you. I don't have the numbers right now, but if you have.
Counselor Fountain?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I was mentioning earlier, every sensitive going into this, because I know how overworked our administration is. I would hope that all of my fellow councillors would agree with me in saying that we've had issues with contracts before. And for me, as a person who's approving something on behalf of the city of Thompson, I want to know what we're sending out. We don't have that today and I can understand why that probably is. I imagine there's time constraints. There's a whole lack of issues that have led the administration to bring this to us incomplete, which fully understand and sympathize with. But just for and out of respect, I would ask not only for the protection of the administration, but protection of council, that in the future, when they bring contracts to us, that they bring us the, the final legal documents for us to approve and not approve. I don't, I'm not suggesting that they have to do that in this case. I don't believe this is a big enough one to worry. Concern. But as I had said earlier, Madam Mayor, we have had problems with contracts repeatedly and I feel much more confident voting on them when I've seen the final document. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And I think we're between, it's catch twenty-two situation. In order to get this person to develop the course, we have to approve the dollars so that we can do it. I do think it's not an unreasonable request that we see the course in its finished product. And that, and I'm also, I, I think it helps a little bit. I know the person, I see in the name that is doing the course that has worked with the province through driver training and that in the past, so they will have access to a lot of the provincial information that they're going to need plus whatever has been held in the course in the past. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is my last question. Is this person qualified?
I'm sorry, I just.
Is this person qualified to do the job?
Yes, we did an interview. It was advertised with a picture. We did the interview and she would be qualified, yes. She's got a background in, like, years.
And she said, and she's also background in teaching, so she's, I would say she's more qualified. I don't know her great deal personally, but just by the work that she's done at the Y and that driver training, I've never heard anything but good about it.
Just good enough. Thank you.
So any other concerns, questions? Seeing none, I'm going to call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carrie. Yeah, one opposed. Sorry, I didn't say it out loud. Yeah, one opposed. Sorry, I didn't say it out loud. Now going into bylaws. The second reading of bylaw two zero zero seven two zero two one, Sunday shopping repealing bylaw. Resolution two zero two one zero two one moved by Deputy Mayor Wong, seconded by Councilor Lumber. It resolved that bylaw two zero zero seven two zero two one being a bylaw of the City of Thompson to repeal bylaw eighteen eighty-six dash two thousand twelve being Sunday shopping bylaw be given the second reading. Administration?
Sure. Um, province passed bill four back in December, which effectively got rid of the retail holiday closing act. Um, as the City of Thompson's bylaw eighteen eighty-six twenty twelve, which is our Sunday shopping, uh, bylaw was based on that retail holiday closing act. It's no longer has any standing, has no effect. So to take this bylaw off of our books, we have to do these repealing bylaws. So this is currently, uh, council's opportunity to do second reading. And after this, you'd have an opportunity for third reading. Um, and then that would be removed from the books.
Okay. Um, go to Deputy Mayor Wong?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think these are good news for the retailer, but I have one concern about the memo come from the city manager. Can you clarify that? So if council wishes to impose restrictions on retail shopping on certain public holiday, including Sunday or new bylaw must be adopted. That means even though we script this bylaw, in the future, we still can introduce a new bylaw for that, for people that use it.
Yes, not only on Sunday though. So a new sphere of power has been added to council's powers under the municipal act, which allows council to regulate the hours of business, of any business within the municipal. So all of the comment I'm making is if council has that new power, if you want to pursue it, you can. If you're fine leaving it, you don't have to do anything. But as of now, there are no restrictions on Sunday or shopping hours any day until council decides if they want to exercise that, that new power.
So it means it's still a possibility to set a bylaw if some council that anti-business or religious big time person, it still can be had. See, this is the thing I'm concerned. Because I did talk to some of the businesses. They're very happy that we made this move, which is a good thing. Myself, I always like to have a freedom of choice. This is the best thing to me at this moment, but only the language is kind of concerning. What if one day we have a whole bunch of council that elected is anti-business or religious, that is still going to be happening to them. So anyhow, I will support this for now. That, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other, uh, Councilor Coleman?
Uh, I didn't support this at the first reading. I won't support it at second reading. I will not support it until this council comes up with a bylaw that replaces this. Because I don't think any business out there should be free to do whatever they want. There's got to be some restrictions somewhere, right? Because it, it don't help the small business. It only helps the big business and that's where we're at today. The big business is booming, the small business is doing nothing, right? I like, I would not support this unless we got a bylaw in place to replace it, replace it. And if this council chooses to do what, probably twice, I, I'll agree with it. I won't go for it, but I'll go on with it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And just so you know, I have reached out to the businesses and Chamber of Commerce and let them know that if, if they want changes to this, that it's their duty to come to council and express their case and we would listen to it. And who do we have on this?
Your Councilor Valtino.
Councilor Valentino?
Thank you, Mayor Smook. Uh, yeah, I'll be supporting this. Uh, I, this is basically just housekeeping to remove this bylaw like city manager McGinnis said, off of our books. And if council decides maybe at committee level or through the Chamber of Commerce, if they want to look at, um, different restrictions, I'd be willing to be a part of those discussions. But for now, I'll be supporting this as it, just the basic housekeeping to get this bylaw off of our books as it, um, would follow under the proclaimed bill four from the province. Thanks.
Councilor Lumber?
Thank you, Mr. Smook. Uh, as, uh, Councilor Valentino just said, I, I'm supporting this, uh, and as I see it as a housekeeping item right now, however, uh, our city manager has said that we could go forward later with other bylaws, uh, for particular businesses. And, uh, I know that this council has discussed it on a number of times. I'm wondering if, uh, just like some clarification from our city manager. So we could go forward later with changes on our bylaws for saved liquor in particular.
Yeah, my understanding is council could explore, uh, regulating operations of certain types of businesses as well. So if council were to identify certain types of businesses that they wanted to regulate, that's something that administration could develop on your behalf.
Councilor Fountain?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I recognize this is kind of a ridiculous point to, uh, debate because it's kind of a housekeeping item that everyone said. But I really actually appreciate the fact that we're having this discussion in public and would like to thank councils who brought that forward for conversation. I think it's important. Because when we take it back to committee, we won't be having that public forum to do that. And, uh, as I had said last, uh, meeting, when we, when this came up in the first reading, I feel like the freedom, uh, of businesses to decide on their own what their hours should be are important. And I understand, uh, there are a number of counselors who have issues with this, particularly the hours of the liquor mart. Um, I would, um, point to them that, uh, our inspector for, with the RCMP has gone on record publicly and saying that he doesn't feel like changing those hours to have any impact there. Again, appreciate the discussion. I think it's great to have discussions like this despite the fact that they're kind of moot point. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Okay. Uh, was a good discussion and thank you very much. And, uh, it's, it is a fact that if the public, and I've made it known for a fair few times over the last few weeks, that, uh, if there is something in particular, they could come forward and talk to us. With that, I'll call for the question. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And opposed? One opposed. Carrie? Would you go ahead with the third reading? So basically, uh, the third reading of bylaw two zero zero seven two zero one. Yes. Um, and this will be a recorded vote because it is a third reading. Resolution two zero two one zero two two moved by Councilor Prue, seconded by Councilor McMyrdle. It resolved the bylaw two zero zero seven dash two zero two one be given fine, third and final reading, and that it do now pass in a recorded vote. Uh, we'll go to administration.
I have nothing further, Your Honor.
Okay. Council, anything further? Uh, Councilor Coleman?
I would like to say one more thing. I don't like doing this until we got something in place to replace it, in place to replace this bylaw. And I can't see why we're moving ahead without any, any bylaw to cover it. Now we're just taking the tone of the door and nothing in place. That's this council's responsibility. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. I think, uh, it's also council's responsibility to listen to the public. And as none have come forward yet to, uh, do this, uh, we would be putting words in people's mouths. So I think it's our due diligence to wait for the public and, uh, and our citizens to come forward and request any changes. Any other counselors' comments? Okay. Seeing none in a recorded vote, I'm going to call for the question. All those in favor? Deputy Mayor Wong, Councilor Prue, Councilor McMyrdle, Councilor Lumber, Councilor Fountain, Mayor Smook. Councilor Valentino, Councilor Ellsworth, opposed. Councilor Coleman. Thank you. Carrie? Brings it into our business room today, uh, the mayor's report. This activities from January nineteenth to February first, twenty twenty-one. Mayor and council along with city manager Anthony McGinnis met with MLA Danielle Adams on January nineteenth. Uh, also, uh, canoe was in on the meeting. Along with city manager Anthony McGinnis, we met with Lori Henderson on, uh, on Kelly Mc, uh, Kelly Knoc on January twentieth. Uh, the Thompson Community Development Corporation Board meeting was held on, uh, January twenty-seventh. Various committee meetings were held, recreation and community service, development review, legislative and finance. And this morning, we held our first, uh, since June, our actual, uh, mayor's Monday morning meetings, and they will continue for council and, uh, entities involved, uh, on the first, on Mondays starting today. Also, uh, today is RCMP appreciation day. So, uh, if you see a member, uh, out there, please, uh, thank you. On behalf of the city, I actually took some mercy chocolates to them. So, uh, they were very appreciative. I got to tour the new cells that we just paid to get painted and they look very nice. The RCMP is very impressed with them. A very, very good job was done. So that is one more good, good news story in, in our, in our books. I also got to talk to a couple other areas. Um, the drug enforcement and, uh, has been, uh, really up and coming this last month or so. They've made quite a few drug busts up here. Uh, their, uh, traffic division has been busy and is going to be busier. They've got, uh, another, you know, special tool in their toolbox that's coming up to aid them. That will be, uh, very interesting. So, uh, keep us posted. They're working, uh, very hard. So, uh, a big thanks and shout out to the RCMP. And today, the big news today was, um, our Vaxport satellite site opened today. And the satellite site is our own Thompson Regional Community Center. They had appointments for a hundred and twenty persons. I got to be there and watch the first two or three, uh, doses of the vaccine, uh, being given. Uh, so we'd like to, you know, reach out and thank the province of Manitoba for including the City of Thompson as their satellite. Uh, city, there's the Vaxport at the airport is, uh, still, uh, working on it a bit and, uh, they will be finalizing those plans in the near future. So thank you, the province, uh, the City of Thompson, our administration and staff. I just can't imagine anybody would know how many meetings Anthony has been in on this and that our other staff that has taken part. The staff that was down at the arena today, making sure everything was just working, picking and keeping everything clean and that. Uh, no words can thank them enough. So thank you. Also a big shout out to you, um, going to Bell MTS and KNC for glass, it's only been two weeks ago, basically, since we're announced. And they managed to put in all the communication systems and everything that has needed to go there. Uh, everybody has stepped up to the plate. And the NRHA for having faith in Thompson, the City of Thompson, that we could be a partner with them and get this through. I think we proved, uh, when we had the flu vaccine clinics in the fall, that the City of Thompson and the NRHA were, uh, working in a great partnership. And this basically gives us a use for our TRCC right now when it is closed. And it is basically at no cost to the city. So we thank the NRHA and the province of Manitoba for thinking less. So like I said, the first hundred and twenty doses were given today. It seemed like everything's going smooth. Uh, they're basically there, uh, all week. And just, uh, for anybody I asked in case if there's any extra doses that people don't show up for their appointments because it is all by appointment only and it is basically for healthcare workers. They do have a waiting list of, if there's any, the, uh, Moderna stays for about thirty days. So basically this clinic runs till Saturday. And before the end of Saturday, if they know they're going to have so many doses, they will phone the people on their waiting list and they will come in. So there will be no doses wasted while they're in our facility. And they were very appreciative of the city and our working relationship with them. So it takes all of us council and everybody to approve and all our, our staff, administration. So a big shout out that the vaccines in Thompson. Yes, I know we need more and it's definitely a priority, but it's even coming. There's going to be clinics, uh, in satellite clinics in Flint Lawn and the park in, within the next week or so. And they were, today they were in Piquet today and I think tomorrow in Thicket Portage, they're starting our Bayline communities. The nurses are going out there. So the north is being looked after. It just, you know, it's, uh, we, we are, uh, very high on the radar scale. So thank you to that. Uh, another announcement that we read today is that, uh, the province has decided that people shopping can begin in, uh, the northern division. So as of eleven fifty-nine tonight, the stores can sell non-essential goods, all stores. And we will go to limited capacities like they are down south. Still not opening to the hairdressers. So your mayor isn't going to look very good for another week or two yet, but it's just through the persistence, a lot of the stuff even that's happened, I can tell you without taking too much credit that Anthony and I, a lot of these statements that come out have words that Anthony and I have literally put in their mouth to get them. So it's, uh, Anthony has done a great lot of, of work here and, uh, so thanks, uh, to Anthony for all this. Uh, Tammy, she's right there in the behind. She's there to keep us honest when we're doing this. So I'd like to thank her also. So with that being said, uh, with any other counselors have done, uh, mayor's work, I think, uh, we're on the right track. Everybody is, uh, really stepping up to the plate, plate through all this and through our, our different things. So thank you. Uh, anybody else? Uh, Councilor McMyrdle?
Thank you, Mayor Smook. I'll echo all those thoughts of thanks for Anthony and staff and everybody at the city and yourself and council. Um, good job everybody to get the Vaxport up and running. Um, I just wanted to plug the, the Thompson Public Library, the curbside, um, services available. Um, in the board meeting, it came up that circulation is picking up a little bit, maybe just through awareness or people getting familiar with using that kind of service. But you can find, uh, the catalog at Thompsonlibrary.com and connect with them through Facebook or telephone or email. So thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Seeing no more comments, I'll call for a adjournment. Councilor Prue, Councilor Coleman, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Let's keep up the good work, folks.
Is that, that's Marty? Where you going now? When I'm broken, I'll free your air, but he has in the past there, man. I can give these.
Yeah. You can do a lot with, uh, tongs and a spatula.
Oh, damn, we chart right.
I was, Michael Lieber was involved in that.
The, um, I thought Pfizer had gone to a hiatus.
It has. So they shifted to Moderna for.